Cheryl, we're live.
Welcome to our afternoon session of October 15th. Next up on our agenda is a Valley County opioid response presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present today. Do we need to do introductions? Just, you know, everybody.
Um, I know everybody, but I don't know that Mr. Thompson does, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay. I'm Shelley Hitt. I work for Central District Health and I'm also the project director for the Valley County opioid response.
I am Patty Jordina. I'm the executive director for the West Central Mountains Youth Advocacy Coalition, also known as YAC for ease.
And steering committee member.
And steering committee member.
Prevention chair.
Prevention chair. Thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
That is an acronym.
The commissioners, my name is Royce Hudson. I'm a professor of social work at Boise State University and a program evaluator for Valley County opioid response.
I'm Lyle Nelson. I'm on city council. I'm also on the steering committee.
I'm Shaila Riker. I'm the administrator for Ignite Idaho Family Resource Center.
My name is Tracy Jamison. I'm the executive director at Ignite Idaho Family Resource Center and the project manager at the Anchor Youth Assessment Center. And I'm also the recovery chair for the steering committee.
So appreciate the board's time today. We try to come and present once a year. It's been a little longer than that, just to let you know what we're up to as a consortium. And so the steering committee is here today and we're going to take turns on slides and have them come through. Next slide. I want to just give a little history about the resources that Central District Health has received for grants to specific Valley counties. So in 2018, we received $200 or $200,000, $200,000 planning grant, which really started the core of the consortium. And so, once that planning grant was completed, we received a million dollar grant for three years in 2020. And that's when I started with Central District Health and was the project director with VCor. The implementation grant, we were able to start the recovery center. The majority of the funding went to starting and supporting the recovery center that was created in McCall. It was some seed money for, and we'll hear more about, YAC's survey data and Icelandic prevention model that assesses kids' risks and those prevention services. As well as, we did some waiver training for MOUD for medication management, but the rules had changed in the middle of that grant. So that was, those were kind of some of the main services that was funded with that grant. And when that grant was starting to run out, we applied for the behavioral health grant, which is the one we have currently. And it's a $2 million grant for year four, for four years. We're in year four. We just started September 1st with our fourth year. And so this is when we were getting that grant. And we're going to hear, we've got, YAC has prevention services and Ignite funds behavioral services through them. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that here in the next couple of slides. And then we just received as a new grant, which was a really kind of a bit of a surprise, I have to admit, with everything we have going on with federal funding. It's a pathways grant and it's to develop, it's a training program to develop kids in high school to get them interested in behavioral health. It's a new area for HERSA, so it's really exciting. We have a new sub-grantee with us, which is AHEC, which we'll talk a little bit more about, as well as Ignite and VCor.
So Shelley, that is getting high school kids interested in doing this work.
Yes. It is so exciting. We're going to talk more about that as we get further. It's a new area. This is a totally new area. It is. And we're going to be offering stipends and we'll talk more in details when we get to that.
So let me ask a real quick question. I mean, everything up here, I see grant, 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 grant. If you didn't have grant, what funds this deal?
I don't believe we would be able to fund a lot of the things that we have the funding for. And because Valley County is considered frontier, we've continued to qualify for funding through HERSA. So we have a grant writer now at the department. We didn't have a grant writer. Bill came on literally with the behavioral health grant. It was his first year, first month with us actually. He was our grant writer with Central District Health and helped us write that grant. So we continue to look for other funding. And there is some supplemental that the board does with some of the opioid funds. But the amount of money that's coming in, I don't know where we would find all of that funding.
To me, it's, you know, I just look at numbers and I'm going, grants are not sustainable. You guys know grants aren't sustainable. At any time, they could go away.
Yes.
And then where are you going to be left to be able to provide the same services?
What's good about the HERSA grants and one of the requirements that they have is that they require us to do a sustainability plan. And so usually that's at the end of the year. And one of the things that I've done is I've worked more with HERSA, and these guys can attest to it because they do quarterly reporting for me, is that we work on sustainability as soon as we get the grant. And Ignite and YAC can talk a little bit about as we get into their services that they're providing on the behavioral health grant, how they're sustaining. The money has helped us get things started and work on that sustainability piece. Answer your question?
It does. I've always raised my eye anytime I see a bunch of grants. It's like, yeah, they go away. What do you have?
We work on that. We work on that. This team works on it really hard. We work really hard for that. And is it all sustainable? You know, we do our best to do the best we can. Good question. Thank you. You guys feel free to chime in.
I will note on the pathways grant, there was only 12 awards nationwide. So having that is pretty impressive.
When we applied, they were going to give 16 and they only gave 12. Thank you for that. Yeah. So it's quite a, quite a big kudos for that money.
Lyle? Well, I like my part. It is pretty brief. So I think if we all just took a second to look at that vision, we find that it's really the vision all of us have. It's, you know, that's the 30,000-foot view. Why commissioners and all of us come to work, you know, is to help people live the full potential. And then now though, we say, that's what we want to do. What part of that do we have? What part does VCor, how do we break that down that we can help all of us achieve our shared vision? So the part that kind of brings, breaks it down to me is we are physical, mental wellbeing for youth struggling families through innovative programs. In the West Central Mountain regions. So we take on a slice of creating quality of life for everyone here, but that's, that's our slice of mission. And then in terms of speaking about values, a couple of words come up. I think to me that the essence of collaboration in achieving our mission, and you will hear where we've achieved national recognition, VCor, Valley County, for what we've achieved and is based on our collaborative model. I think you're going to see compassion. And then I'd make one thing about excellence again. We are certainly successful with grants because the money tends to flow with excellence is. The internal thing about excellence is we recognize we're doing pretty good at that. And everybody at this table also would say excellence is still not enough. You can never get to the point where we want to in this field. That's my point. Thank you.
And so this is just a little bit about VCor, just kind of how, who we are. One of the things that we did do with the behavioral health grant was we integrated in Adams County because they're so close to Valley County. And so, and again, Ignite and YAC will talk a little bit more about some of the services they provide within Adams. But one of the things, we've had a really strong partnership with Southwest District Health. And we use a multidisciplinary approach. As Lyle mentioned, collaboration is truly the heart of the consortium and this group. And the group has grown. We'll see the list here in a minute of our voting members. And again, back to your question, creating sustainability, we just don't want to take funding and put services in and then not have them sustained. So we really want to take a look at how can we sustain behavioral health and substance use disorder services in the community. We've got established bylaws. We have the steering committee, which is really kind of the executive board. We, the steering committee, we meet monthly and talk about what, kind of how we want the direction of the group to go. They also process the letters of support initials, initial process before presenting those to the consortium for a vote. Bylaws and yeah. Next slide. There's our members. Okay, next. This is a list of our voting members. This was getting so long, I kind of, I had to shrink it down to fit everybody in. It's really kind of exciting. The Area Health Education Center of Southwest Idaho is the new sub-grantee that's going to be leading the pathways grant. We'll talk a little bit about that. And so we've added Cascade to school districts this year. Let's see, the Valley County Sheriff came on as a formal, and I have to plug the sheriff. He is at every meeting, almost every meeting. Has been a huge supporter. And that has been a huge change since he's been sheriff. And I really appreciate the sheriff's support. It's phenomenal. Let's see, I'm trying to think who else. We added Southwest, I think. I don't think Southwest was on since the last time we presented. And then, and it's a really nice, good list. And those are all formal voting members that have signed our letter of commitment to come to our meetings every month.
Valley County's on there, but unfortunately, I can't say I've been to any of them.
The probation department, Molly and Jac are there every month. And usually it's two of them, but once in a while we get one, but usually both of the. So you have wonderful representation for Valley County on the board. You're always welcome.
I attend when I can.
We appreciate that. And this is just my role as project director. As I mentioned, I started part-time with the implementation grant. Now that we've had additional funding of full-time, I just oversee the grant, reporting sustainability, oversee the budgets. And then I've been overseeing our NSD campaign.
Is that one of your board members?
That is a Valley County resident that comes to the house by love. That's a local.
I would like to interject to come on that last slide too. And you saw all the list of those members and we've spoken a lot about collaboration. But if you have successful collaboration, you need a really dynamic, devoted leader to constantly make all those communication things. And bring that collaboration to some kind of a consensus and move it forward and keep our priorities straight. I'd just like to say, I mean, Shelley is 1.0, but she's doing 2.0 of contribution to this program. So Shelley, sorry to interrupt.
I love what I do and I love this group. It's not work to me. I was so excited. We got another great, we continue to work with everybody. It's really been a real joy for me. And this is just some other responsibilities. We have the protocol in place for the letters of support. And so that they come to the steering committee, we look and make sure that it meets Exhibit A, that it's not a duplication. We follow that protocol to the letter. We take it very seriously. You'll have another request, I believe it's coming from the teenage house. There was a lot of back and forth about additional information, which will be included in that. We, we really take them seriously. And, you know, making recommendations on whether we think it's a good fit for what the needs are in the county. So that's, that's one of the, I think I'm really proud of our protocol. Our protocol has also been recognized as a best practice. When I talk with my HERSA project officer, there's nobody else that's doing what we're doing that has a protocol in place. So we're really above and beyond. It was also recognized when Courtney Boyce did the, kind of the study. I forget exactly what her term was, but with the other counties, it was also a recommendation for the counties to follow. So I'm really proud of the protocol and appreciate this protocol to be able to use that process.
So what's a drug takeback day?
There's a national drug takeback days. I think they're in April and October. And that was originally started with the implementation grant. And I believe the sheriff's department has taken that on. They do that on their own as well as McCall PD. So that's something that was sustained after, before we first started it. So you can take in your medications that you don't no longer want to use, prescription medications and dispose of them during drug takeback day. There's also year-round locations in McCall at the pharmacies. So if you have old medications that you don't want to use, it reduces overdose risk because we don't have those medications lying around, you can dispose of those.
It's really interesting also, you know, to avoid misuse of those drugs. If you flush them, they end up in the lake and they actually measure, and it creates mutations and all kinds of issues. Just the amount of drugs that people dispose of inappropriately.
I hate to think about how if I flush it, it ends up in the lake, but.
Yeah, you make me nervous, sir.
Down the river and end up in this lake.
Having avenues to dispose of those appropriately. And then overdose prevention training. We do something Central District Health offers. We did quite a bit of that under the implementation grant. We still offer that as a health department. We have other trainings that we offer as well. But all VCor has to do is request trainings. And then I offer strict training scholarships. I've done that for the last couple of years through the grant funds and set some money aside for the local partners to attend. ICAD, the Idaho Drug and Alcohol Conference in Boise in May has been the top one. So, and then we also provide a training for, we'll talk a little bit about assist with suicide prevention training for Ignite to be able to do that and offer it to them.
Who does your overdose prevention training?
Courtney Boyce is our overd, oh no, well, Courtney Boyce used to be our, and it's Ashlyn does that as well. We have two staff that can do it at Central District Health. We're actually going to be up for the stand-down, veteran stand-down on November 8th and have a booth as well. So yes, if you want to reach out to me, we need to get coordinated. We've offered it to the county as well. So anytime you need overdose prevention training, we're happy to come to you.
Does our county people, their office, either do they come to those or do you?
We haven't offered one in a while. We haven't had attendance. We had some discussion a year or so ago, I believe, we were aware about. Just, we could even come and train at the county. So if, I think there was a change in HR director when we were having those conversations. So if you would like us to just come and train the county too onsite, we can absolutely do that. And they can modify the training so that it fits the timeframe that fits for staff. So we can just do it county-specific when we like.
If they feel they need that, I'm sure they're pretty well, we've got pretty experienced staff down there in McCall.
She's talking about all of our employees. You're talking about our probation staff, our court services staff.
They're dealing with overdose people all the time.
Yeah. I can't remember probation staff. Your probation staff are phenomenal. If they can do, it's been a couple of years since we offered the community one. But we're very flexible and can modify the training for your needs. And then, and I state, this is Zeb. So I'm so proud of Zeb. So we have a steering committee, or a subcommittee, meaning subcommittee, that we have funding in this grant to really talk about how do we want to reduce stigma for mental health and substance use disorder.
Maybe some drugs.
That's not our job, no. And so, you know, it was one of our, it was actually probation was like, you know, I hate all the swag that ends up in the garbage. And we should really, it was a really good point on making sure we develop a campaign that connects with kids, connects with the community, and just doesn't end up as the event is over. And so the steering committee helped with our youth as well. We developed a mascot as well as the message, courage to connect. And we, we had the kids help name Ms. Patty and Tracy had the kids. We gave them some options and we had some options for what kind of mascot we wanted. And it's really kind of started to take off. And I'll let the group maybe fill in a little bit about that. The other thing that's really cool, we have our own website. It's thecourage2connectidaho.com. And it has a lot of resources on there. And also, one of the other things we added, we have a, we were able to animate an lock zone video on how to administer an lock zone that's on there. And Zeb, we were able to put Zeb at the end. We do an annual education event and we have, what, 400 participants?
411.
Which was amazing. And we doubled from the year before. And then we just did the Adams County Health Action Team A chat, community awareness walk, and they were, they used the messaging. And that was just last, this last Saturday. So the other thing that we put together are the journals. You can see the guided journals. Thank you. Those are super popular. Do you guys want to talk a little bit about?
We use those journals in a lot of our programming. So for our school programs, our teen mentorship programs, for our youth summits, just to kind of give some guidance for kids on how to document some things they might be thinking about. And we really use courage to connect in any way that we can. So for example, McCall-Donnelly High School, once a week, they have a courage to connect corner. So during lunch, we just have some of our staff there with snacks and swag. So it's just a moment to check in, let kids know we care about them, and just to chat with the trusted adults. So we see courage to connect and has almost everything that we do.
You know what's missing? Crayons.
We have those. We just didn't know if we want them.
I'm going to get you the box.
We'll get you some.
You are your grandkids.
So the, everything has a QR code that will link to the website. I want to give a shout out to Pepper Shock Media. They're who we've contracted with to help us develop the Yeti and to help us do the media pushes. And they've done a phenomenal job. So, and everything that we've developed with Pepper Shock, we own and so we get to keep. And so that's a sustainability piece. We're going to have to talk about updating the website as we get to the end of year four, because they manage that for us and do the management on that. But everything, and that was my goal, that we had something that we could continue to use after this grant was over. And I'm really proud of this team because they really have used Zeb and really have promoted him in the community. And that was what was really neat about having Southwest also promote Zeb for their walk over there with Adams County. We're excited about Zeb. Everybody wants a mascot suit and I'm working on it. I just don't know. We've got to find somebody that can make ones.
Halloween's coming up.
I know.
It's probably really cool to have a bunch of Zeb's running around town.
Girls down at the corner down there in McCall, little candy squash. Got those little, they're not Sasquatch, but they're not white.
I've been, I'm working with Pepper Shock. We're trying to see if we can't find some more, some of that stuff. It's a, you can find a lot of Yetis that are white, but not blue. So I'm working on it. Before the end of this year, that's my goal.
So there is an Adams County Health Action Team also?
There is, and a lot of this team. I sent one of our other Ignite staff members. I mean, her usually goes toward the seat, but yes, we're so thrilled to have that as a resource. These are just some of the stickers that we developed. We developed one specifically for these River Trail Walk this last weekend. And then these are just the different stickers. Any questions before we move on to the next slide?
All right, great. So this is just an explanation of my role as a program evaluator for VCor. There's my credentials. Underneath there, you can see that pretty much annually, we run youth focus groups, both here, down here in Cascade and up in McCall. Generally, what we're looking for there is looking for trends in use, what kind of drugs, how often, how many they perceive are using at any given time. Where do they use? What are the events that precipitate further use or increased use, that sort of thing? We just did one last spring. In Cascade, things looked pretty good. Generally, they described a culture that was very aspiring, if you will, that they were very much interested in furthering their education, post-graduation, and athletics and those sorts of things. That was not the same in McCall-Donnelly. That was a bit more different. They felt that use was much more prevalent. That was, that was expressed in Cascade. There, in both cases, there was clicks involved, those that used and those that didn't use. They were known to each other, who those groups were, and where they used and such. Most of the use was either at large events, school events prior to pre-partying, or they were at, at parties, oftentimes in the woods. The drugs of choice were primarily alcohol and marijuana. There was almost no use of opioids or any of the other hard illicit drugs. And thankfully, there was no reported juices of illicit drugs, sorry, off-label drugs. So Adderall, Ritalin, et cetera. That's not the case back when we first started doing this in 2014. There was a lot of off-label use by kids. That's gone away, so that's good. Marijuana and alcohol are perceived to be very easily readily available. I think in the perceptions of most of the kids, both up there and down here in Cascade, was that marijuana might be slightly easier, but they're both considered to be very easy. So that's a real problem is the availability of drugs and alcohol, marijuana in particular. The other thing I do, we did is a ripple mapping exercise, which is just a, an evaluation exercise of the organization itself. It's kind of strengths focused, looks at whether the successes have been since the last time we did that, which was two years ago. So we do that every other year. Then we look at how we've grown, what we've done. The previous ripple mapping prior to this year, we did this year as well, was the strength was, our biggest strength was in the collaboration and coordination with the various consortium partners. And that collaboration and coordination really resulted in our success in these federal grants in particular. Between CDH and the partnering organizations and Shelley and the VCor team, between all of those organizations, they were able to put together really good applications, as we've already talked about, very successful for the size of the county that Valley County is. Especially per capita. So we outlined that. We talked about a little bit more about how Ignite's grown, how YAC's grown, how our partnerships have grown with the other organizations throughout the county and the region. So that was, that's the shore of successes that we've had in the past. The challenges, there are still plenty of challenges, of course. I'll talk in a second about the increase in suicidality here in Valley County. The other ones that are common problems for the community, transportation, housing. And for us in particular, the lack of licensed of mental health providers, oftentimes because of transportation or housing issues, but other, other reasons as well, because we're a frontier county. Other things I do, community presentations like this one, community focus groups. We haven't done one this year, but every other year, we do stakeholder focus groups. And every, so often we'll do parents or other concerned individuals in the community about their perceptions of youth use. Communities, their perceptions of the community's acceptance of youth use and what they think would work and won't work. And that's also two we do with the youth focus groups too, is ask them, what do you think would be helpful? And we do listen to that as well. And then lastly is program evaluation. So primarily in that, in that capacity, one, I help Shelley with the HERSA reports. I'm the numbers person. And then also two, what I do is help program evaluation consulting with Ignite and YAC as well. So that's more getting number crunching stuff. How well are they doing and how much are they getting well by? Moving on to the next slide, suicides.
Let me ask one question on the last one. So you talked about the readily available as far as drugs and alcohol. So that tells me we have a societal problem with the adults because it's easily accessible in their home. So are we dealing with that conversation at all? Because back when I was on the school board, we had a huge push for just say no. And the kids had real problems between parents and their students. We didn't realize that was going to become such an issue. And we actually had to bring in counselors because we had huge conflict now between the parents. The kids are just saying, you know, you're not supposed to be doing this. And the parents are going, shut up, I'm your parent, you know? We had a lot of conflict. But it tells me that we need to do more some way on the, you know, on the adult level. Because we can hit the kids, which obviously is very important to me, but they're going against a parent. And that's where they're getting the drugs and the alcohol from.
And I think Shaila will kind of touch on that in ours. A lot of the resources that we are offering is like parenting classes in-home behavioral health, not only to help the kid, but to also help the parent understand what's appropriate, what's not appropriate.
Their perception, it's important, Commissioner, that when you think about accessibility, because that is a very important aspect of this whole problem set, is that in, when we talk to the kids, it's, they believe that the parents are very anti-use by adolescents, both in McCall and Cascade. The issue has been generally, in terms of alcohol, has been kids who have aged out to 21, who are still around purchasing. Sometimes they're stealing it from local retailers. Sometimes there are sponsored parties by adults where they're chaperones, so to speak. That still occurs unfortunately. But primarily, it seems like they're getting it from folks that have just turned 21, 22.
So as much as we say, well, we want our kids to stay here and be successful, go to college. Go grow up.
Yeah, you know, and one of the things was interesting in Cascade in particular, because in the mindset of the kids in Cascade, they felt that those, they call them, they refer to them, I forget what the term they use, but they're boom. they felt that those, they call them, they refer to them, I forget what the term they use, but they're boomerang kids, right? They've left and they've come back. And in their minds, they felt like those folks that were here buying the liquor for these other groups of kids seemed like a failure to them. Somehow they weren't successful. So in a way, it was a weird sort of anti-role model uh that they perceived that the ones that were getting the booze for this other group of kids were somehow a loser.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, I don't know if it's a green shoot necessarily, but it's a thing.
Yep.
And our data shows from this year, our 2025 survey, that eighty-nine percent of the students' perception is that their parents think that alcohol is a risky behavior, that it's not something that they would approve of. So most of our kids' perception is that adults do not support it. However, we do have experiences where there are parent-hosted parties that do have drug and alcohol. So there's definitely a parent education element that's still there.
Yeah, one hundred percent.
Just getting a police officer there at the right time is the right thing then.
And then also maybe some, what's the follow-up? What happens when they are caught with alcohol? Because right now, that's not really, there's not a standard procedure. There's the feedback from the students from our Community Youth Advisory Board that says, we need to have some consequences in place. Because when these kids are caught, some of them are just let off the hook. So what does that look like? That's another area.
Yeah, and that was especially true, I think, in kids in McCall in particular, who felt like there was inconsistent enforcement when kids were caught with either vaping, vaping, by the way, is the most popular. Um, when they're caught vaping or using the other drugs, that messaging by authorities was mixed. And that resulted in mixed responses by the kids.
Yeah, kids like things cut and dry. Same for you, same for me.
Oh, that's good to know.
They see special preference. Oh, they pick up on that so fast. Absolutely funny.
In their mind, it's a problem.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, moving on to suicides, if I may, because this is very concerning for us. Uh, from the, uh, the beginning of this year until the end of August, we've had seven suicides reported by Scott Carver's office. Um, five of the seven of those had positive toxicology screens for either drugs, alcohol, or both. Um, one looked like it was an intentional overdose. Uh, five of seven were from gunshot wounds to the head. That's obviously very intentional. Uh, one was a minor and we had two twenty-something. So a little less than half were young folks. There were some older adults in there as well. I think three of them were fifty.
Yeah, Scott said we had, we talked to him at the convention. He said, so far, there's been eleven here in the county.
Okay, so that, uh, since August thirty-first, there's.
Sad.
It is sad. Um, so I already referenced the ripple mapping, so I won't belabor it too much. Um, I do want to point out, which I did point out earlier, was the overall reputation of this organization has improved dramatically, I think, both locally, statewide, and federally. Shelley even pointed out earlier, especially at the national level, a strong reputation of, of successful grant management and grant writing and demonstrating impact. Um, and then, like I said, the grant writing successes have contributed to, in large part, to our collaborative efforts. Um, and then here you see the challenges I already outlined.
Can I go back one second? So on the suicide rates, a lot of that is people coming to us also. Outside coming here to do this. They want to die in a beautiful place. So we're not impacting them um, you know, throughout their life or before they make this decision. And I'm curious why, I mean, if they were to come up here, how would we, how would we let them know that there's resources available to help them make a different choice? Is there anything? I mean, DeeDee has talked about having some kind of a sign as we enter the county. You know, we are a mental health friendly, you know, something or other to try and help inform the conversation. Because part of those ones I know were people that came to visit and did that while they were here. And so it's that, just putting that out there in your, in the mind, you know, is there something that we can do to help empower the conversation of, you know, you're coming here to end your life, how can we help you make a different decision? And if there's messaging signage, you know, how do we put something as you come into town and they gotta use the restroom, you know? The resources that are available. So.
That's a great idea. You know, it's like when you go on bridges and you see like a sign that says use the nine-eight-eight number, whatever, right?
Yeah. There might be something that we can do to help empower that, because we're not going to capture them where their home base is. But can we capture them as they come?
That's something we could extend from the courage to connect. I mean, I, the point of the courage to connect is to connect folks to resources. So do you have any suggestions? What you'd like to see?
Well, DeeDee has just talked to me about a few things. I mean, um, there is a new reader board that's going up um to talk about the canyon down at the south end. ITD is putting it up. Maybe on the opposite side of that, you know, we do something about, as you're entering our canyon, and we, we are a mental health um advocacy or support, or yeah, we're mental health aware, or, you know, just um, I don't know, talk to DeeDee. She had some ideas and it kind of hit me that I think those are pretty good ideas.
I'll go with DeeDee and I'll pitch it to her next.
Yeah, see if it's worked anywhere else, you know? Is there any programming anywhere that actually has been effective in other places? That would just be something to research.
We do that through messaging in the schools, so it'd be very easy to take that same messaging and bring it into the gas stations.
Yeah. Great place to do it as well.
We talked about doing a Roxy ad that's in the budget for shock, so something we can carry towards.
Those would be our locals, yeah. They'd probably hit our locals more, but I know we do have people that come up to visit, but.
Courage to connect.
Gas stations, though, yeah.
Awesome.
On the gas pumps, how they're getting gas.
Yeah.
Just a little.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, and it's relevant to every one of us about upholding our best mental health.
Well, it speaks to the values of Valley County. Even if you're not a resident, we care about you.
I don't want to take the first time, but Sherry and I often mentioned that Valley County, Idaho is still rated number one in the United States for community vitality. And it's these kinds of things that make that true, because community vitality is how much support within the county for each of us give to others. A two-way street on that. So there's a real opportunity here on that.
I'll clock that idea and I'll jump right into Yak. So, um, with the Behavioral Health Grant and most of the funding that Shelley spoke of, um Yak's main focus was implementing the Icelandic prevention model. And so that model basically focuses on two main components. It's the youth well-being surveys that we give to sixth through twelfth graders, where we get their feedback on their perception, on how their environment influences them in their family, their school, their community, their leisure time. Um, and then also their self-reported substance use and their wellness. And then we also utilize community coalitions. So we have groups that come together um that have representatives from sectors of all across different, different sectors, I guess, to repeat myself. Um, they come together and they look at this survey data and they say, what do we have in our community? What are the needs here? What are our resources? And how can we best improve the community for our youth? So we currently have coalitions that meet regularly in Cascade, McCall, Donnelly, Meadows Valley, Council, and Cambridge. Um, the youth surveys, it's been really fun to kind of see the growth of that, that schools get on board with this youth uh survey. In 2021, we started with two schools and we had sixty students. In 2023, we increased to five schools with two hundred students. And just this spring, we surveyed with six different schools, five hundred students. So that's been um super helpful to get some really um relevant data, um that's just right now.
How do you think they, you know, I remember when I was in school, they gave us surveys and it's like, really? Um, forthcoming? Do you feel like these are very forthcoming?
I do. Anonymity is very important. It's just all done by, on a computer. Um, it's kind of click-through. We kind of let them know what we use this for, and I always tell them that this information you give us helps us give back to you. We have money, we want to spend on you, so show us the best way to do that. Hopefully, we've created an amount of trust there that they really do give us some good feedback, because it does not come across that says zero percent uses substances. So I think there is some truth.
And we can flag the bad ones. They're pretty easy. They're obvious, right? Oh, you haven't used heroin thirty times in the last thirty days.
The other thing I just want to add, when we first started the surveys, it was during COVID. And this last year, it's been an opt-in, which we weren't sure how that was going to go with the schools. And for Patty and her team to continue to increase with the change in the opt-in surveys at the school.
We used to just be able to have kids' parents opt out and the rest we could survey. Now the parents have to give actual permission to take this survey. So one other thing is that we have a new partnership with Communities for Youth, which is out of Boise State University. We had been partnering with Planet Youth out of Iceland, so they had been our support for this model. And we have just transitioned to this partnership with local Communities for Youth. And it is a state initiative at the State Department of Education to use these youth well-being surveys. Um, and there is some, there's some incentive there to use those surveys. Um, so we were a little bit ahead of the game, I'd like to say. And now we've kind of partnered and it made it easier for our schools to take this survey.
What's the Iceland thing?
It's the same, so it's the same Icelandic prevention model. The Boise State team that's running Communities for Youth is implementing that same model. It's just a different team. So now that team does the survey administration, does the data analysis, instead of the folks out of Iceland doing this data analysis. So.
They're doing the same thing over there in their country.
Did you get that from us?
We got it from them. Yeah, we got it from them.
Oh, did BSU start using that Icelandic, though?
The BSU is Dr. Megan Smith, and she was part of the creation of the Icelandic prevention model back when. And then she brought it over here. Um, it's been very cool to see. Iceland has been implementing for the past twenty years, and they've seen extreme success with the community buy-in. So it's just a worthwhile model. Um, so we're happy.
McCall is participating now?
Yeah, McCall Donnelly did take a shortened version of the survey, but that was a foot in the door and we took it. So we will come back to them again next year and um, and especially with this partnership, they have some great services to provide us, so. Wonderful. Um, and then just really quickly, some of the things that the coalitions have identified, almost every community has created or helped support an after-school program um for K-12 programming, and some have specific to teen programming and mentorship. Um, we've also helped lean in on policy change. I think Cascade Schools' drug and alcohol policy was updated this past year. Yak and Ignite Idaho brought some amazing partners to the table to look at what their current policy was and to change it from um punitive to treatment. And we can come in, kind of assess what the situation is, and really get help for that individual and the family. So for Cascade to adopt that policy was huge, um and we hope to see other communities in the area do the same thing. Uh, we also helped influence the cell phone policy from McCall Donnelly School District. So we really sit in wherever we can to advocate for you. Um, community connection is really key connection. We just see that that is a priority in all of our communities. So whether it be kindness campaigns, gratitude, or in Cascade, they're specific as Cascade Community Cares. And they just do special things for their youth and for their staff, just to show, we're looking out for you and we care about you. Um, and then also we have our Community Youth Advisory Boards made up of students in high school that give their feedback on um how they'd like to give back to the school and to the community. And also, they come and tell us and these coalitions what's working, what's not working, what we can do better. And youth voice is
That's pretty cool.
Number one in our minds. So it is pretty cool. And we've got some really dedicated, amazing students. Uh, we had a few take part in the Northwest Alcohol Conference this past summer, and they have just been catapulted to want to do more and more and more. So it's really fun to see that. Uh, the final program that I will highlight is probably my favorite. It is Hope Squad. So this is a suicide prevention program that we launched three years ago. We currently have Hope Squads in all ten schools across the region. In our region, we consider West Central Mountains, so Cascade, McCall, New Meadows, Council, Cambridge. Um, all ten schools, fifth through twelfth grade, have adopted this program into their weekly uh activities, which has been amazing. So these Hope Squad members learn how to recognize warning signs in their peers and then learn who the trusted adults are in their schools and in their communities to have conversations and say, we need to get this person help, or here's what we can do to connect. Um, uh, Dr. Hudson did a fabulous job of doing an evaluation of our last year's efforts with this program. We do a pre and a post-test for all of our Hope Squad students, so we can see, is this program working? We were thrilled to see that it is working fabulously. So we had some um really strong growth in students, participants knowing when and how to get help, um knowing what to do for a friend who's contemplating suicide. Um, and all of these can identify at least three trusted adults that they could turn to. Uh, students in our Hope Squad were three times more likely to reach out to a trusted adult when a peer was in distress. Um, actually, just as recent as this week, uh about eleven-thirty at night, there were peers going back and forth via text. One identified that my friend is in distress. They reached out to one of our Hope Squad facilitators. And by seven forty-five the next morning, Ignite Idaho had already been engaged with that student, connected with the family, and put a plan in place to help get support for the student and the family. So the program is working. I just got chills. And it happens regularly. So the fact that we are just connecting those students um to the trusted adults and getting them help before it's a real issue is life-changing and life-saving.
Yeah, you know, for kids, empowering kids that it's all right. Say, hey, my buddy's in trouble. You know, just empowering those kids to know, hey, it's, it's all right. Here's somebody to help.
That's so many suicides.
That's your buddy there. You know, so that's awesome.
It is wonderful. We're really impressed with it. Questions on any of that fun stuff? Will we let Ignite?
If they're one of you, please. Okay, I am like Lyle, and I'm happy because I taught for forever, so I do so much better when I stand to present.
Plus, we couldn't see it.
So, through the Behavioral Health Grant, we have had three main focuses. Our resource center, our behavioral health programs, and our family services. And the heart of Ignite really started when you think about someone who is having a hardship. Maybe they just became a small mom, a huge domestic violence, and they were a stay-at-home mom before, and they have nothing, and they have none. Or they are trying to start out living in sobriety and they have no support system, no help, they have no adequate housing. Whatever these circumstances are, they're really hard. And so if you have to go to one place to get help with this one thing, and then you have to go here for a counselor, and then you have to call this person, and then you have to drive down to Boise to see this person to get this help. At the end of it, it is so hard and so complicated. Most people just give up. They lose that hope. Trying to get that help is too hard. So Ignite's heart and soul is to be that one-stop shop where you can come in, you can call us, you can walk in the door and meet whoever is at the front desk, and fill out an online form, because we found that a lot of people who needed help had severe anxiety. So they would send an email and we'd call, no answer, call no answer. So some of that is that, okay, let's meet you wherever you are at. If you need to fill out an online form and email us back and forth for a while, we will do that that way. But they come in and we help with everything in-house as much as we can. Let's make this call to this resource center or this resource together. Let's fill out this application together. Of course, you don't have a fax. Nobody has a fax machine anymore. It is a fax for you. Yeah, we will walk with you through all of the different hearts. And usually when they, we find that they have one need, they have five other needs that aren't being met as well. And so we just work with these people hand in hand to walk with them, to make their lives better, to give them these skills, to learn how to advocate for themselves. And as a resource center, we are only as strong as our working partnerships with all of our resources. And we are so incredibly fortunate to have incredible working relationships with all of the partners in V Corp. We are continually building and developing these great partnerships with schools and law enforcement. We could not do the work we do without all of these partners working together for these good outcomes for our community members. And that is truly what makes the difference, is bringing everyone together to the table for the good of the people and the community. Um, and in our behavioral health, a big part of our sustainability is being able to bill insurance for the support we provide. Now, in our area, as I'm sure you're aware, life is really expensive up here. And a lot of the people we serve don't qualify for Medicaid. But by the end of the day, when they've paid their rent, it is definitely more than twenty-seven percent of their income and everything else that they've tried to feed their families. They have money left at the end of that one, and a lot of them need that help. So we work through this behavioral health and to be able to give counseling to uninsured and uninsured people in our community. We need that help. We need that support. We will do better in life overall, but we can't afford that care that they need. We also have an incredible in-home behavioral health service that is this hands-on service to the whole family. It is Tracy's Brain Child, and it is the coolest thing to see in action. It is behavior modification. It is family therapy. It is individual therapy, and it is hands-on application of the skills that they learn in parenting class. Because you can go sit at a parenting class and think, oh, yeah, this skill is really nice. What are you going to make yourself level up? Are you going to actually implement that the next time your child says something that frustrates you or does something? Are you going to use the skill you learned for your default behavior? And Tracy and the staff, she's trained to do that, take all of that and bring it in the home in real time. And we have seen tremendous positive outcomes for the families. We're blowing. We're blowing to let a professional into their homes and make that change happen. We also offer recovery wellness support groups, and those have been done with an angle to eliminate stigma. So it is, are you wanting to better your wellness? I mean, now sobriety is a huge part of that wellness, right? But it is more focused on what are we doing to get well every time? And building each other up in this pursuit of wellness to reduce that stigma of, oh, I murder myself since I was lost. Oh, no, I'm going to my wellness group. So that is our goal with that. We also have teen support groups. We make them really fun. We offer lots of snacks. And what will do they know we're working on skills the whole time that will hopefully empower them to say no to substances, improve their mental health, give them cool new skills, put in a fun way. And then we are really excited. We have been working on the Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training, also known as ASSIST. And we had two of our counselors do training trainer. And they are going to be bringing three different sessions for our community this year to empower community members with these skills to help prevent suicides. And then lastly, that big part of what you were asking about, Commissioner Mopman, what are we doing for the families? Ignite Idaho offers parenting classes. We have a whole array of them. Some have been funded with the Behavioral Health Grant, some we've done, all sorts of different ways to fund. But we do Parenting with Love and Logic, the Strengthening Families Program, which is intensive because both parents and their children have to come to class and then learn how to work together with them. We also have active parenting teams and cooperative co-parenting. And through these classes, we are hoping to teach the parents how to have hard conversations. In every single one of our curriculum, there is a session on how do you talk to your parents about your expectations about substance use, about risky sexual behaviors, about all of these factors that can impact their children's quality of life. And here's how you can do it. So this empowerment of parents in their journey. Here are the skills that you need to have to confront these things. And then as part of that, we also offer childcare and a meal with every parenting class. Because we know it's hard enough to get out the door at the end of the day. So if you know your kids are going to be taken care of and you don't have to worry about dinner, you are way more likely to show up and take a seat and have the class.
Real quick question.
Yeah.
Your mobile aim in home behavioral health, I guess it has to do with all of it. I mean, we're in a fairly large Hispanic community up here. You guys are able to service that?
So we have really been working on it. I am currently the only person in our office that speaks Spanish. So I come in and I've sat in some assessments with Tracy before where she'll say something and I'll just translate. Um, and we also have a telehealth counselor in Boise that works with us. But we are constantly working to figure out how we bring more bilingual professionals in our area. So it is definitely something we are very cognizant of and we're really hoping. We're already in such a provider shortage that getting providers up here in general is hard. But we are just hoping and praying that a bilingual counselor will say, I would love to move to McCall. I'd love to work for them.
And we do have two, um, community members that we have volunteer. Uh, one's paid, one volunteered, and they will help us if we ever have any issues with that at all. They immediately will meet with the families.
Good.
They'll help us do paperwork, right, you know, yeah.
Like there's technology, but it's a little funky.
Yes, the technology is awkward. So through this program, we have grown so much. We started off in a teeny tiny, it could not have been more than two hundred square foot little office in the Park Place building in McCall. And now our approximate square footage occupied in the Park Place building is nine thousand square feet. We have.
Brian loves you guys.
So many people there, and it has grown so much because we crawled, we walked, and then we ran. But we hit the ground running when we started running to try to bring everything in that our community needs. When we hear that there's a gap, we ask how we can. We are also really excited. As you guys know, we have expanded to Cascade to have a physical presence at the community center. And that has been incredible, both childcare and that Resource Center piece of our connection. And we are really excited. I think it'll be next month that we want to get to occupy some skates, to have an office in New Meadows at their new youth center building. And we've always been able to mobilize, but what we've found is having and establish a weed presence in all of the communities is so much more impactful. It's saying, yeah, call us. We'll come be there when you need us. But really having a place to go, nice call to difference. And our numbers alone have grown tremendously. Something Royce talks about often, but I'm going to loosely paraphrase, is once you start offering a service, you can't immediately say, oh, my goodness, we have such an increased use in the services, people are having problems. It is that increased awareness that help is available, and we are definitely in that stage right now. So when we started off in twenty-twenty-two, in that grant year, we had two hundred people participating in all of our programs. And we averaged about thirty monthly walk-ins to our office. And as of last grant year, we had five hundred program participants participating in parenting education, mental health supports, all of those things. And we averaged about two hundred walk-ins as of our last grant year, where people walk in for whatever that may be, no question asked. Um, and then our mental health outcomes, everyone who participates in programs, even parenting class, is screened for substance use, anxiety, and depression. We also screen for other things depending on what they're participating in, what their age is. And it's been really cool because last year we caught three different parents who flagged for substance use and substance abuse from parenting class. And we were able to pull them aside, build trust with their parenting class, and say, hey, can we talk about some of the answers you gave us? And it was really cool to build that connection through parenting class and then help them. So we have seen breakthroughs and we're excited to continue to do these activities.
You better not assess us during certain meetings.
She takes drugs.
As long as you don't have risky behaviors. And M and Ms.
Or Kit Kat.
Uh, just really quickly, the path, this is the Pathways Grant. So as I mentioned, Southwest Idaho AHEC, which is the Area Health Education Center. There's actually four centers in the state of Idaho and Southwest. Uh, AHEC has other funding, other hears of funding for them to deliver services. It was through our consortium. When we first started applying for this grant, we reached out to, uh, Eric Studubaker is the Executive Director of Echo Idaho, to see if they'd be interested, like, you need to connect. And against that collaboration and coordination with AHEC, and so we did. And again, we're one of, Patty, imagine, we're one of twelve. So they're gonna, um, a lot of the grantees that receive this funding are taking a year to plan. We're not doing that. We're do, we're, we're hitting the ground running. So AHEC has a curriculum that they're going to be teaching, and they're going to start it in the summer. It's those eleventh and twelfth grade students. They're going to be offering youth, uh, they're, be able to get internship credit. They're still working on what the credits are going to be, how many. There'll be stipends offered when they sign up and then when they finish. And, um, we're partnering, we have Cascade School Districts right now, uh, involved as a partner. And then Yak and Ignite are going to kind of start to get the ball rolling, which I'll have them talk about briefly as soon as I have the time.
So we are hoping to give youth in high school some exposure to behavioral health careers. It's a little bit harder than others because to be credentialed and able to provide even those lower-level, we call it paraprofessional, mental health services, you have to be at least twenty-one years of age. So it's not like, oh, I have my GED, I can become a CNA. So we wanted to give them these tangible experiences that they can carry with them, that will inspire them to hopefully participate in the AHEC programs and give them experience. So we will be having seminars where we bring in our behavioral health professionals, our counselors, our case managers, our peer recovery specialists, and talking to them about what our daily life looks like. And then we will also be having youth in the high school age participate in mentorship programs, where they get to work with younger youth, elementary age, teaching them skills, things like gratitude, things like these activities, so they can see what that hands-on work looks like, as well as a shadowing program where they can shadow mental health professionals through the day and see what their work looks like. And in addition, we want to give them some skills. So we will be providing youth mental health services as well. And youth participants in our big mentorship and shadowing programs will get second.
Does Department of Labor have apprenticeships in the mental health room?
Not that I'm aware of.
Sure.
That would be an interesting.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I know of it.
That would be an interesting conversation with them because then you pay people while they're actually doing that.
And we, we built in stipends for that very reason, but I can double-check to AHEC since that's their wheelhouse. I'm thinking not, but I don't know that for sure, but I will ask that question. And that's why we did, we built in stipends for each program that they participate in, because we wanted, we want the kids to get paid to participate.
And for Yak's part in that, we will, um, expand Hope Squad to have a mentorship element. So some of these Hope Squad members will help facilitate and, um, instruct some of these lessons to their squads. Um, and then we will expand our Community Youth Advisory Board into Cascades. We will develop some programming there with the high school age students. And then we currently do table talks, so we are going to add an element that's specific to Pathways, where we really focus on, I would say, like behavioral health soft skills. So like empathy, conflict management, um, listening skills, and just have like these monthly conversations with food, where we kind of learn those basic skills of being a human.
And this is a quote we've had in the presentation before, and I just love it, and that Sylvie is, um, family talk, uh, too late. And then she helped me develop this presentation the last year, and I just love it. It really speaks to, to the consortium.
I was gonna say Nice House, but I just realized where that picture was taken.
Where's that taken from?
One of the towers.
Holding down fire towers?
Well, thank you. I mean, yeah, I'm just, I was impressed every time we did an update. And, um, I've just been involved enough to kind of know what you guys are doing and what, where you're at, so. I am so very, very proud of Valley County and embracing, you know, all of this and community as a whole, that we support each other the way that we do. When we go to conference and we talk about what we have, a lot of people are going, how'd you get started? What did you do? You know, I mean, even a lot larger counties don't have what we have in Valley County.
Pretty special.
Yeah, it is. And it's all just because of you people that are working in this field and really spending the time, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
To lead on a lot of this, but we've been having these health conversations for many, many years, my friend.
Fifteen at least.
Yeah, exactly.
Wonderful. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Next step is going to be Ignite. Hey Doug, all these Doug, they all need to be attested. I've got everything signed.
Okay, we're ready.
Oh, do you have these T-shirts in large, extra large? Did you have the T-shirts in extra large?
Yes, I was, oh, I was going to say that. If you want a different size shirt, let me know and I can.
We have some too, if, I don't know.
Maybe a bigger one. Maybe I can get them to Clerk Miller and, um, deliver to you. Would you like that size?
Yeah, I'm taking an extra large.
Happy to do that. Thank you, Patty.
I used to be a large, you know, but.
Well, quit eating them M and Ms.
You're eating the M and Ms.
Okay, up next on our agenda is request for opioid settlement funds. Tracy, you're up.
Right. Shiloh's going to do most of the speaking.
Okay.
Um, okay. So we are here today to ask for fifty-two thousand dollars in opioid settlement funds to support our crisis response program. Um, at this point in time, we are averaging nineteen crises a month that we are responding to, um, which is pretty significant. We have had several of those referrals come, not just from an individual calling our number, although we do a lot of marketing about you can call us twenty-four hours a day. We are going to respond to your crisis. We get law enforcement calls. We get calls from schools. We get calls from other counselors saying, hey, I'm a little concerned. It's outside my work hours. And at every point, people can walk in during the day in our office and we will juggle our schedule. We will make sure someone is responding to that crisis. But then after hours from five PM to nine AM, we have a crisis counselor on call all the time. And then on the weekend, they're on call, five PM Friday to nine AM Monday, ready to respond. So we continue to see the significant need. Most of them are primarily a mental health concern. Um, we have found often substance use or domestic violence, or even a combination of the three can play a role in that, sometimes homelessness as well. But mental health is the driving force behind these concerns that we are responding to. And we really want to be there to continue helping take burden off of the police. Um, Magellan has what they call their MRT, which is their mobile response team. And in the best-case scenario, they would get a call to their office down in Boise, and they would magically have two professionals ready to go, and they would get in the car and they would be here in two and a half hours. We know that that situation is almost never going to happen, and that response time is going to be far longer. Add in weather concerns, professional availability, all of those things. Getting someone here to respond who does not live here is going to be difficult. And we are able to respond in person within minutes to be there in these very difficult situations. We believe that the work we do, and we have seen it hands-on in work with Kevin, takes a burden off of law enforcement. Because law enforcement's job is not to be a babysitter, play social worker, be a mental health professional. They do vital work and they deserve to get to focus on that work. And if we can't come to a call, which has never happened, law enforcement professionals are going to have to sit with that individual until help arrives. Or often what happens is we go in with a situation where before Ignite was here, they would have just gone straight to the ER to see if they need to take a fun ride to outpatient treatment out of the community. And often we're able to say, okay, wow, we hear you. You are going through some intense stuff. Let's make a safety plan tonight. Can you commit to that? Come in, see our counselor in the morning. Let's get you some resources. Let's find you support. And then we are able to prevent hospitalizations that would have otherwise been a hospitalization. So our goal is to reduce strain on law enforcement, which we're seeing happen, reduce overburdening our emergency departments. And while we don't have a full ROI study, I believe our return on investment is really big because we have stopped so many hospitalizations. We are able to come to situations and take the burden off of the sheriff's office in a situation that they're not quite in their wheelhouse and handle these things. However, when we took our ASSIST training, that Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training, one of the things they really emphasized is that crisis response teams, for safety reasons, should never go out alone. You should never just send one of your professionals alone into these situations. And we have responded to enough situations this year where we have reflected and said, yes, we should not be doing that. So what we look at is we need to be able to have two on call to go respond to these situations for safety as well as convenience. We have responded to situations where the whole family had just experienced a devastating crisis. And yes, one counselor helps, but if you can divide and conquer, go into groups, go provide support to everyone as they have had the rug swept out from under them in their lives, that makes such a big difference. So we want our professionals to be safer. We want to keep them around and we want to keep them here and happy, working here. And we want to be able to better serve people. So while we have funding to have one counselor on call, we do not have funding to have two counselors on call. So I looked at it this way, that budget would be a hundred four thousand dollars a year. We only pay them a thousand dollars a week to be available five PM to nine AM, five days a week, and then two straight days over their weekend. So if you count those hours, it is such a tiny hourly pay, but they do it because they love it and they have a passion for our community. But if we took those nineteen calls, because we had exactly nineteen last month, and every single one of those calls resulted in hospitalization, which they did not, I believe it was three. Um, if we sent nineteen people to inpatient treatment, that cost alone would basically be that hundred four thousand dollar budget. If we take in time lost for Kevin's deputies, if they are sitting there for eight hours responding to a crisis, instead of continuing to do their law enforcement work and continuing to go out in the community, that is also a significant amount of money lost. So our goal is to continue to provide that cost savings and that hands-on immediate response to what is going on.
And I just want to say, um, in, in some of the recent crises that we've had in our area, I, one in particular, um, Kevin called me, it was twelve-twenty-seven, in the middle of the night, and we responded before one AM. I was able to get a second counselor to, I, I picked her up. We were still there before.
I was able to get a second counselor to, I picked her up, we were still there before one AM. Were able to relieve his deputies and were able to work with the family for over three or four hours, connect them with additional services and make sure that they were okay. And it was such a sad situation. But to be able to be there, support them and then give them other supports in the community because of our other partners, is pretty amazing to be able to stay worried. We just really appreciate all your support in the past, you know, and we really hope that we're able to get these funds to continue to keep our community safe and our staff safe.
Clerk Miller, so I'm looking at numbers up there. It looks like we have a hundred and ten thousand right now.
That's correct.
And do we have any other outstanding asks?
We have one that's gonna be coming next month for twenty-seven thousand.
Now, we, we are going to be doing things differently with our grant program and, and that's for taxpayer funds. I just want to make sure that when we're doing these, that we are covering all bases and somebody isn't getting locked out because they didn't know the funds were available to them. So I'm looking at the vendor names in the past. Phil Care Wellness is not around anymore, are they? Call Mobile Medicine, haven't heard from her.
Madam Chairman, there, I'm aware they still have an active facility. I just don't think, no? Okay.
The Rock?
I don't know.
I believe the one in McCall, Minimal, there might be somebody coming from Boise, but I don't believe it's.
Now the building's for sale, but.
Yeah. And, and the person that worked there regularly is no longer. I think there is one lady coming up.
Madam Chairman, if you don't mind, if I just make the commissioners aware, I did reach out to the V Corp to let them know that we had a significant amount of funding available and requested that they get the word out. That was conducted and then after the word was out that Valley County had the hundred and ten thousand dollars of opioid settlement funds still available, now these new applications are coming to the commissioners for consideration.
And these have been reviewed to make sure that they meet the opioid settlement guidelines.
Madam Chairman, if you, we just received the letters of support from V Corp today that have been distributed to the commissioners. And commissioners, I do want to let you know that the county did sign on to two more settlements, but we don't know the amounts of, of those. But there are two more settlements that the county will be, two more organizations that will, have already settled. That distribution of those dollars will be coming in the future, but we do not know the amount of those.
One other thing I'd like to say, and I don't know if Kevin wants to speak to this, but we are working with quite a few homeless people that have been dropped off in McCall.
Not a good place to be homeless in the winter time.
And I just want to say that whether it's us calling the sheriff or McCall PD or them calling us, in the last three weeks, we have been able to meet them, get them a hotel, get them some food, get them a bus ticket. The two that I'm specifically speaking about, we had them go to Spokane, Washington. We had, St. Vincent's was one of them. I'm trying to think of the name of the other one. We got them hooked up with places there that could get them immediate work, that pays them daily, found them a place to stay. It wasn't just ship them off and see you later. It was setting them up in a community that had the ability to get them help. These were crisis calls. These were people that called us from the community and said, this guy's sleeping on the corner by the Shell Station. He has no food, nothing. So just so you know, that is helping our community stay strong. That is taking hours off of what they do. And that is helping somebody else get the needs met that maybe just aren't for our community.
Yep, that's awesome.
Just to let you know, I also went to the last V Corp meeting and kind of said, is this the best way to spend these funds? You know, should we be compiling these, building a building together, you know, that kind of thing? And that's still out there, but for now, what I heard in response is it's best to put it into the programming that's already in place.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You guys are doing a phenomenal job, all you guys.
So I would move to approve the request for opioid settlement funding for Ignite Idaho in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second at all in favor? Aye.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate it.
We'll continue to evolve and figure out process, but for now this works, so. Doug, do we have some, oh, that's coming in next month. We don't have anybody on hold for the opioid funds right now.
We do. They're coming in, it's the Change House.
Okay, they're coming in next month?
Next week.
Oh, next week?
Yeah.
So, you know, we've kind of pushed a couple of them back, McPaws, Transportation, that's separate funding.
Separate.
So we don't have anybody else with the opioid.
No, we do not have any further applications for opioid settlement funds.
Okay.
Again, we, we made the V Corp aware that the funds were still available. We requested that they make contact with the existing entities that have received funding in the past, as well as any additional individuals who have participated on the V Corp meetings to make sure that they were aware that the fundings were available. And so far recently, we've received two applications that have then gone back to the V Corp for the letters of support. The Change House also received their letter of support and they're on the agenda for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Very welcome.
All right, next, we are going to have a discussion regarding the move to the Cascade Annex. I asked to put this on so that we can just discuss the thirtieth and the thirty-first, closing those two days, so that you have commissioner approval from the majority of us. Because we were not able to get movers until the thirtieth and thirty-first, then, you know, we think it is, would be the best to just close those offices. And we've got to get started on promoting that and advertising that so we don't have people driving down here trying to get ahold of somebody.
So what date is our correctional guys coming in with that furniture? Do we know that yet?
Twenty-third still.
Still on the twentieth, that's Thursday.
Give them a week, which is so much better. Everything can be done and.
Yeah, it kind of felt, felt good. I've been on the bookroom for that week.
Yeah, I'm gonna go down to the, I'm gonna go down to the annex a little bit. Hopefully Michael's still there and just, are we still on for the twentieth? It's gonna be a push, I think, but. Hmm?
That's Monday.
Oh. Hoping he can pull it off.
I can see how, he's gonna have all of his final, I mean, sign off on everything, hopefully.
Hopefully, it is.
Well, twenty-third.
That's the day he was giving me, it was the twentieth.
People coming in on the twenty-third.
We got people moving.
What else do you guys need before moving? Anything? You've got all the boxes you need, you've got all, you know, anything that you need? I don't know.
Because I think we talked last week that send-in and that can leave their long-term, I don't need it, stuff in their own offices. And just move your needs.
Still, we're still gonna have a lot of stuff that we use every day.
Oh, yeah.
Just so you guys know that, yeah. I think what, I feel like once we get everything down there, we're able to visualize what each area needs for their space. We can possibly make more decisions than by different, I don't know, file cabinets or what have you.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna have to get everything down there and then figure it all out. It's just almost impossible to know this moment in time what it's all gonna look like, so. And you have them separated, yeah. You have them, I'm assuming being separated, so you know which ones are staying here, which ones are going down there. Sue, what's going on with the move of the DMV? Is it still on the third?
We have that scheduled with ITD because they'll be the ones to move everything on November third, on Monday. And so I was hoping we'd all be moved down and then we can maybe focus on helping.
There's been a conversation about leaving them here, but you think the situation with the parking lots under control or what?
Yeah, we feel like it's, we're gonna work that out and Sue feels like we can make this happen. I don't think that's gonna be that bigger deal, so I'm kind of leaning on her. If it falls apart, it's her fault.
Well, what's gonna happen next year? What's gonna happen next year is that parking lot is gonna get torn up and repaved, so we're gonna have to just, you know, we'll probably end up having to close for a couple of days and then over a weekend, I mean, they should be able to do everything.
Yeah, they're gonna be doing a lot of work down there, so.
Four or five days.
They can, they can work things around. You know, they can tear up the parking lot, regrade it, and then let everybody have it while they're working on the other parts of the parking lot. So they're, those guys, they're working around. So they'll make it happen. But yeah, it could be interesting, so, to say the least, to say the least.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
It'll be a little bit interesting for a few days. But we'll, we'll get it.
We'll get it.
Yeah.
And it'll, it'll work.
Well, it's either move everybody now or DMV doesn't move for like eight months because by the time you get through all of that.
Circumstances, I don't really feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, well then, I would move that we approve closing the Building Department, Planning and Zoning, and Assessor's Office for public content, or, or public consideration on October thirtieth and thirty-first.
Oh, yeah.
Allow the move.
I second that.
It's been moved in second at all in favor? Aye.
Aye. You know they're gonna be wanting, wanting to be paid for those two days, though.
They're gonna be working.
They're gonna be working.
That's why I said. Don't look at everybody.
I said public communication, because yeah, the public will not be able to get to them. I have not talked to Jeremy yet. I was on my schedule to get ahold of him. Has anybody talked to Jeremy?
Uh, not recently, yeah.
Okay, I will reach out to him since we're done here and make sure that we're on schedule.
With runners and stuff?
Yeah. I don't know, since he thought originally it was the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so I'll make sure that he's not moving that stuff then until the thirtieth, thirty-first. And that might, I mean, it's probably not him moving it, so hopefully.
The last time I talked.
Office equipment, yeah.
The last time I talked to Jeremy, he, he was gonna be ready to go, phones, data, everything would be ready by the twenty-third. He was, he was on it, it sounded like, so.
Well, I think all of that, but we have to make sure that, because I think it's Fisher's office equipment's gonna have to come up here and move all that stuff.
Oh, you talk.
We had him for twenty-third and twenty-fourth. We gotta make sure that he's on for the thirtieth and thirty-first now, so.
Oh, for all the copiers and everything that goes along with the infrastructure, ah, yeah.
Did we get, Terry, you got all the furniture ordered?
I'm, I'm, yes.
Okay.
Microwave, fridge, the tables.
You have two fridges?
Scott ordered. One.
And we'll just get another one ordered?
Yeah, one's, yeah, one's on order. We'll hit it in. Probably gonna need two, so we'll, we'll get two. But my focus right now is to get everybody just untied in there. They got the bare necessities needed for, a break room's going to be set up.
Okay.
Additional stuff, we can, we can follow on with that, I think.
We got coffee pots coming and coffee and all that good kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Is there a place for an undercrown refrigerator?
Counter?
I know when you walk down the hallway on, it would be, and it, and send aside, there was that little break area, I think it had an undercrown refrigerator at one time, I don't know. Looked like there was a spot there for one.
In that very back office?
There wasn't an office, in that little hallway.
Right across from where they're public.
Where you walk up to their counters. You turn around on the wall there, there's a shelf and some cabinets, Drea, and stuff.
I'd much prefer to keep all that stuff in the break room.
Oh, yeah.
We don't need to have that stuff right out in front of where the public is.
It looked like that's where that hole was. I don't know what it was, but like it was undercrown refrigerator. Might have been a beer cooler, I don't know. You know, all those ladies down there, Mary Tyler, you know?
So are, are they just supposed to, usable now?
Uh, mine did.
Yours did?
Yeah, so you can reach out to Jeremy and just make sure, but.
You said hers didn't work.
Just reach out to Jeremy and say, can you activate me? He should be able to do that.
So we are still having problems with that elevator.
Really?
The contractor's been up here to my knowledge three times to try to fix it. So I believe Scott was taking the lead on that. Before he does leave, I'll make sure, find out exactly where he was on that or where he is and pick that up.
That's good.
It stops working when him and I both get in there, so that could be, I don't, I don't know. It worked fine for Brett and then when Scott and I went over there, it, it does it like a, it gets out of, out of level and then it sends a safety signal and stops it, so.
Interesting.
I don't know if it's hydraulics.
No, thank goodness.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not getting in it. I'm not getting in it with Neil anyway.
Don't get in it, yeah.
Making fun of my weight now.
I was making fun of you being a man, getting stuck in there. All right, Doug, we did approve to close on the October thirtieth and thirty-first, so.
Um, who made the, my apologies.
I made the motion, Neil second. All right, anything else regarding that?
Everybody's ready to chop another bit, ready to go?
Perfect. Um, I'm gonna get.
Contractors on schedule.
Go ahead and move right into the.
Executives.
Terry, as far as we know.
And then I guess, if there is any, I mean, I'm assuming the evaluation will last an hour, then three-thirty, if there's any members of the public.
Then we'll get that, yeah.
Fair enough.
All right, thank you.
Well, you guys, um.
Terry, hang out now and we'll just.
I'll ask you guys a question real quick. I mean, I got a big dump trailer. It only has two foot sides on it. Would that be useful if I brought that down? For incidentals and stuff you guys can move, just one in the trailer?
It would be nice just as a backup, just in case for sure, yeah, I will turn down.
I'm just, I know there's gonna be a lot of stuff to move, especially on Sue's end. You got a lot of people, a lot of junk. Lot of nice stuff.
I was just gonna grab the thirty-foot goose neck and flap it and just throw everything on it.
I hope it falls off on the way down there.
I was just saying, you know, I could, I wouldn't mind, I could come down and help. I'll be out of that boot by then, so.
You will hope.
I will.
I'll be at a meeting the thirtieth when we're moving.
Uh-huh, yeah, it's like being sick, that, that doesn't work.
The Brittany Brand thing.
Yeah.
Scheduled for the thirtieth.
No, it's the twenty-ninth.
That's the, the school one. The thirtieth was the continuation of the one we just had last week.
I think it's the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, and the, the twenty-eighth I can't go, the education one because of the meeting. But I'm pretty positive it's twenty-ninth, so unfortunately that's gonna be the day you can't.
Twenty-ninth, Commissioner's Day.
Zoom one from one to three.
Oh, maybe you're right. Oh, you're right, thirtieth.
But I, I have people that will be stationed at each end.
Okay, perfect.
Cool.
You are correct. Thank you for keeping me accountable.
The twenty-ninth, thirtieth.
Yep.
Sue, will you come look at? Have a fun.
We're done.
Thank you.
All right, before we get started.
Do you wanna make a motion to go into exec?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we just wanna stop. I would move that we go into executive session, Bright Oak House seventy-four, two oh six one B for an evaluation.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second and roll call vote?
Thompson, aye.
Mopper, aye. All right, we are in it. Two, three.